This is Donald Zay signed up for public comment.
Anyone else?
Nope, no one else.
Okay, just a reminder, public comments are agenda writers only, just a reminder. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have a public hearing on the rip piece. We can have an explanation on that later. The item number E is a resolution. I strongly ask that the council not support that to change and deviate from state law, allowing liquor establishments within a church and I don't even know who this is or where it is, but to deviate from state law, allowing liquor licenses in the, within the prescribed limits by of a church or a school. I don't think we should be deviating from state law on that. We have such a small community, being noted as having the most liquor establishments of any place in the past, to allow increasing that, I think is wrong. Could there be an explanation on the item number nine, agreement to state tax sale regards to plat eight, one, one-two? I'm not sure who that is, where it is, what's it for. I would expect that you're going to be giving the introduction on the, and explaining the other ordinances that are being submitted for introduction. I appreciate that. And I support the congratulations for Patriots. Thank you.
Mr. Noah, sign for public comment.
Thank you. Next item.
Your next item is a consideration of appointment of Robert J. McConnell as Associate Municipal Court Housing Court Judge. And that is named.
Submitted by Ann.
Yep. Councilman Racker.
And he has, I don't know if you've read his resume and his background, he would just walk right in and start, I mean he's.
Good evening.
Hi. Good evening.
Give us a little background for the public purpose. We have radio resumes, Anne said, is impeccable.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
First off, it's an honor to be considered for the housing court. I've been a lawyer for about 28 years. I've been at my current job for about over 25 years. I really, I work on a civil litigation trial attorney and I have a lot of experience doing environmental cases, predominantly lead paint cases. We've represented a number of children in Rhode Island and in Wisconsin for lead poisoning, which is still a serious issue. We've also, my firm has also brought to trial in the state of Rhode Island and in just last summer in California, litigation against the lead paint companies as well for creating a public nuisance by selling dangerous lead paint back when our position is they knew or should have known. The jury believed us in Rhode Island, it got overturned at the Rhode Island Supreme Court. The California judge ruled in our favor and that case is on appeal out in California right now. I, I'm at the stage of my career where I think, you know, being a judge would be an interesting new challenge for me. I think I have a reputation of being fair and honest and I look, I look forward to the opportunity.
Thank you. Any more? I think we have a colleague of yours, Matt, want to say a few words, you know, the judge.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
I would just briefly echo the comments of counsel and Racker stated, which is, I think we are blessed to have a candidate such as Attorney McConnell with a great background in housing and litigation and the issues that as a city that we spent the last, like year, two years focused on, how do we create a toolbox of efforts to tackle the abandoned and blighted property in the city, so that street by street we can clean up the city and improve the quality like the table is, and I think Attorney McConnell is a great candidate for this position and would, in a fair fashion, both for residents, landowners, property owners and tenants, help to move the city forward.
Thank you. Any council member?
Of course. A question, which is, we're glad to have you. My question is directed towards our city solicitor. What's the time commitment for the position?
January 2017. It's concurrent with the terms of the council.
Okay. I guess more granular, like is it once a month?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Traditionally, the housing court has been once a month. Recently, we've been trying to, as part of our mission task force, bring more cases to the court and have a more aggressive strategy to clean up abandoned blighted properties. So it's come to twice a month.
Anyone else? With that, I'm looking for a motion for approval of this appointment.
So, second.
Motion by Stephanie, second by Ann. Any further discussion? Click please, Roqueville.
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Racker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sainz Segal?
Yes.
Our motion passes five zero.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your next item is an item that was tabled on January 12. It is the application, business application of transfer of license for 310 International, the 7-11 store on House Street.
Is your representative, Senator Leno?
He is, but I guess he's.
So on the, on the.
You want to come up to the line?
Yes.
Thank you.
He has somebody coming, I guess.
Oh, he does.
The representative, and he's asking if we could wait.
Oh, sure.
And just a few more minutes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
I guess looking for a motion to move that a little bit later. Motion by Councilwoman Racker, second by Councilwoman Estano Segal. All those in favor of moving it for a few minutes?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, nays, ayes, ahs. Thank you.
So we'll move to item number six, which is consideration petition of JPM Enterprises is doing business as Lighthouse Laundry Mat. Asking for ability to extend their business hours.
Good evening. My name is John McCrall. I'm the owner of Lighthouse Laundry Mat. And what we're proposing is we do not want to extend the retail hours, the hours that were open to the public. What we'd like to extend, what we'd like to do is allow our employees to continue to work past the retail hours in order to get laundry done that's Friday during the day. So that's, that's what we're proposing, that's what we're looking for. Right now, we're open 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And some nights during the week where they need to be there, you know, four, five, six hours after that, but the doors will be locked and they wouldn't be open to the public during that time, except the fire exits would be available.
I, I don't know if we have any precedent in either way or against. So your work is just continue on while after midnight, for example?
Right, right. We have a bit of a delivery route that comes in. We pick it up during the day and we produce it during the night and return at the next day. We've added four or five, you know, Central Falls jobs to this business and it's a growth of, it's a big part of our growth strategy going forward.
Any, by the way.
Yeah. One question. Would you, how do you currently handle that? So how is it currently handled?
Right now, it's currently handled over in East Providence, the facility in East Providence that we've rather consolidated over here. Frankly, a lot of the workers come from Central Falls, so we're bringing back into the community.
And I can't remember, how long have you been there?
I started in 2004 at, at, down the street, up Broad Street, a smaller building, and we moved down there in 2006.
And is your, the East Providence facility the only other facility that you have?
No, I have a facility in North Kingston as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you do the same in North Kingston?
No, we just opened the facility in North Kingston this week, so.
And your doors, your doors will be locked. Suppose it did become a hangout, like in front and you, would you, you want to police the area or, you know, somebody may see the lights on, they just hang around there or something.
Right, right.
Fact that they got some light, so.
Right. That's not, yeah.
Yeah, and you would not have probably policing that?
No, not at all.
How many employees do you have?
To do the delivery business or overall?
Well, I guess, two questions. Overall, how many?
We have about 15 employees.
15, and then those that would work beyond the normal hours?
Probably four to five. It would be always more than one.
Question for the Colonel. Could you, just last week, we've had any issues around that area, because it does bite broad and civilian, just wanted, just curious to know. I know you don't have, you don't have documents, because you didn't come prepared with that, but anything off the top of your head?
Correct. Colonel, James Johnson, Police Department of Central Falls. I didn't do any research on that location specifically. Off the top of my head, there's, civilian street has caused issues in the past, like not directly related to what's going on. With the laundry mat, definitely not anything that he's doing or doing wrong, I mean affects what's going on in that location. And I honestly noticed that we've had a little bit of decrease in some of the problems we've been having in civilian street, apparently it kind of moves around the city. But civilian street right now is not one of the predominant streets who are causing us the most amount of problems, especially not necessarily in the area where that is, where broad and civilian, it's not really, that's never been the location, it was moving farther back, other than isolated, and obviously we had a couple of years ago with that one, which again, no correlation there whatsoever.
Do you have any concerns about it being open with employees that late on that street?
There's always concerns to me, anytime the business later is open, the more opportunity for something to occur. I would just hope that you would have certain cautionary measures in place. It's always obviously important to us to have panic alarms that go directly to alarm company, which dispatch police in a quick amount of time. There are some stores that we've had problems with where sometimes the panic alarms are pressed and the police are notified for 10 minutes and the perpetrators are long gone. And again, surveillance cameras that are actually actively working, recording. There's a lot of people that come into these businesses and do harm. A lot of times, they may actually be customers. They'll come in, they'll actually case the location, see what kind of security system they have, a lot thereof, and come back at a later time. So security systems will not only catch them during the affecting the instance at the time, the crime, and also pick them up, surveillance of them, monitoring or watching the place earlier in the day or two or three days beforehand. So as long as those precautions in place, no, I have, my personally have no objections.
Thank you.
We do, we do have panic alarms that the employees have and we do have security systems, well, inside and outside of the building.
Anyone else? Because I guess basically, the burden will be on you to make sure you police the area once you're closed and when your employees.
Sure.
We have to, you know, that's.
We feel this is unsafe for any of our employees.
Yeah, just still want it to be a hangout, you know, they may see the bright lights of the place lit up and just hang around the front, things like that, but with that, I'm looking for a motion. Motion by Stephanie, second by Tia. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Council president, is it a motion to?
Motion to approve extended hours, correct. And at this time, you don't have any exact extended hours. It could be, two hours later, it could be.
That's right.
Four or five, depending on the work.
Right.
So it's kind of an open book on the extended hours.
Are you not setting rules, the whole time? No, we're not setting.
No, it's, it's open-ended apparently.
Well, what do you believe, I mean, is it, is it something that you're, you're looking to grow over time?
It is, it is growing very quickly, actually. So some nights it's there to 1:00 a.m., midnight, sometimes it's there to 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning. We do open the next morning at 6:00 a.m. with another crew coming in, so.
Well, I don't know, do we, I'm just curious about like a 24-hour situation?
Well, that's interesting, because I think the next order of business is a 24-hour situation and we currently do have, I guess, well, CVS is ours, that's 24 hours.
Right.
But chances are, you're not going to go around the clock.
No, we're not. And there's a, it's, there's a distinction in our mind that the retail store closes at 11:00 and that opens the next morning at 7:00, so it's not open to the public, nor will it, that's not our goal here.
So should we, should we set like a 4:00 and if that changes, to have them come back just to revisit any, any possible concerns that the police may have about that?
No, I, I don't think the hours would be the problem. This concern could happen an hour after, it could happen five hours after. I mean, it's up to you, people. I, me personally, I, I don't, I don't think we need to do that. No. I mean, if it works and it's not like.
Well, yeah, I'm more concerned about, I'm more concerned about the police knowing, like, you know, are they closed, are they open? You know, if they're going to keep an extra eye on it or something, what their, what their flow of their business is, more so than, I'm not concerned that they're going to do anything wrong.
Right.
More concerned about the safety of the employees. So I worked in businesses out of 24 hours and police were more, more quick to come around and just check the building more often because they knew we were there for 24 hours.
Right.
Versus somebody who knew after 11:00 it was all shut down and they sort of put us out of their mind, kind of thing. So that was more my, that was more my concern, not this.
Well, we welcome that. The police have used department on that, so, you know, that's all.
Do you realistically think that you'd go beyond four hours, for example, or five hours after closing?
We have in East Providence.
Really?
Counselor, yes.
You're going to have any lot of radios while you're working?
No. Nothing else.
None outside.
Any fireworks going on?
No.
Thank you.
No alcohol, so.
No. Not very exciting.
Again, I.
Yes.
It's up to you. It's up to you, people. I think we could keep it open-ended. If there's a problem, then we'll address it. Obviously, you're growing your business, you're a hard-working person and for your employees to stay active and work also, I give them credit for that, too. Anyone else? So I guess it'll be open-ended, there'll be no restriction on.
On the end time.
On the end time.
So you have a motion to approve the extended hours?
Extended hours for.
Made by Councilwoman Gonzalez, the second by Councilwoman Sainz Segal.
Spot, yes, spot.
Roqueville.
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Councilman Racker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sainz Segal?
Yes.
Councilman Perry is back to nothing.
First of all.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Council president, representatives from 7-11 are here.
Without objections. Item five is back.
Item five is back. Agenda item of de-licence of 7-11.
Sir, can I take the time to introduce myself? Because I'm usually a. So my name is Madhavar Vashneshi and I have a little different background over there. I have a PhD, I'm a doctor, and I've worked 10 years in the area of medical diagnostics and I'm changing gears right now. The past two years, I have a convenience store and gas station in Patake and I live in Patake too, but I bought this 7-11 from the point of view, I want to grow some convenience store with a good food habits. And let's see how far I can go. I have some passion for, you know, because obesity, access to weight, that is a certain issue that I see as a PhD and I want to change that habit. Convenience store is one, one place where I can take, it's difficult, but I'm going to, you know, that's my challenge. That's why, that's the reason I, I took this 7-11 and their target is also to, also to grow in the area of fresh food, moving away from cigarette and, you know, basic convenience store, gas station. So that's the reason I took, I bought this 7-11 with the intention that I can run it 24 hours and it was something that I came to know that it need to be closed from 2:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m. But to my surprise, this, this store is existing here for the last four years and it has been running for 24 hours and this store has no issues. I mean, you can cross-stick with other people, no issues in terms of property, issues in terms of employment. And the thing is that because of the food, milk and, and liquid, there, there are a lot of people who come from EBT and we have 20% of the sales because of EBT. And this is the Central Falls 7-11 which ranked 18th in the nation among 8,000 stores that we sell fresh food. So we sell a lot of fresh food and about 20% of the sale, as I said, is for EBT and we sell a lot of people in the night with EBT. So I want to keep doing it and there is a 7-11 representative, he has been with 7-11 for seven years, so he can tell more about 7-11, particularly this store. This is about my story, why, and my passion and why I'm interested in, you know, having this convenience store 24 hours.
Before we, what hours you, are you actually looking for 24 hours? And the application was still vague. You're looking for 24 hours?
Sir, it is already opening for 24 hours for the last four years and I came to know that it is not supposed to. For some reasons, confusion or some deals, it was opening for 24 hours. So I want to request to let it go, continue opening for 24 hours as, as it was happening before.
Okay, because I think when you came before, you weren't sure about three, four, five weeks ago?
No, that was a surprise to me, that you, I came over here with the notion that, you know, it opens 24 hours and I came to know that it does not. So that was a surprise to me that time.
Councilman, can I, can I ask our city clerk to provide some background information on the confusion and where that happened?
Yeah, a few weeks ago, I'm saying, why you, you hear me?
Yes. I think, so this has been a confusing story for all of us. We were all under misunderstanding of what exactly was happening. So it is true, 7-11 has been open 24 hours a day and it, that, the ability to do that was granted back in 2012. In the file that my office had, that information was not made, wasn't clear. So my office was going, following information that we had that we, that limited the hour of business hours from 6:00 to 2:00. So when this transfer came to us, we communicated with 7-11 through their attorney, who was providing us with this information, that that was the requirement. Since then, since our meeting, we've, city solicitor and I have done a lot of research and we were able to find the minutes of the, of the meetings at which, since 2011, they've requested permission for 24 hours. They had a three-month probation period in which they had detail on the weekends and when they successfully concluded that three-month probation, the receivers, council, receiver approved the 24 hours. So it is indeed 24 hours and has been.
Yeah, that's what I thought. That's why it was kind of confusing.
It really was, it was a lack of communication and really honestly, not very good record-keeping on behalf of everyone who was involved at the time and then since then. So we've, we've done some really good work to clarify it and to look back at everything that was done in the past as of the change to this business.
I'm going to jump ahead a little bit and bring the chief up and ask if there's been any problems. It's been a wonderful business from what I'm hearing. I don't think there's been trouble, I don't have a chief.
James Johnson, Chief of Central Falls. Over the past several years, there really haven't been any problems. There was one instance, I don't recall the date, I don't have it here. I think it was the 25th?
Today.
Yeah, January 25th and it was 11:40 at night. There was a robbery, a good description of the assailant was given and we actually located him and placed him into custody. But that's a really incident I can recall happening. A lot has to do with the surveillance equipment in place, the lighting, that all adds to our tracks from any problems recurring over there and they're very diligent about making sure we're not hanging out in the parking lot, so we obviously make many checks ourselves. And the place is open 24 hours a day, 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning. They actually retract law enforcement because there's no other place for them to go. So CVS, 7-11, Dublin Door, places like that, police are going to visit those locations if nothing else, has customers too. So it does add a little bit. So there hasn't been any problems. Again, we have three-month probation with them, but there's no instances. And since then, again, there's laser incident, which is obviously not any fault of their own, where the person was actually captured from the cooperation that we got from the clerk who was actually working that day.
Thank you, chief. Any questions?
So if this gets approved today, what does that mean on your argument in terms of, does documentation have to change?
Well, they, they actually have. They have permission to be open 24 hours. That has been granted to them. What is before you is approval of the transfer.
Okay.
If we, the confusion at the time was the hours and that's trying to clarify what the hours were, the permission for those 24 hours have been granted since 2012. So unless this council chooses to revoke it, that's not a consideration at the moment or unless there's a motion for that. What's for consideration is a transfer.
Any, anyone have a discussion?
I think I have one question. No, that's really more related to what you were referring to, the fresh food component of it. So you said it was ranked 18th in the nation for 7-11s. Can you just expound on that a little bit?
So, so I think, you can also.
18th in the nation is what? 7-11 is done. We've moved towards the food industry.
Mm-hmm.
We're trying to walk away from the convenience store part of it. This particular 7-11 is number ranked number 18 in the nation in hot food sales and fresh food sales out of all of our stores that have this, have this hot food program. That being said, this store is actually number ninth during Halloween time, we're number ninth in pizza sales. I mean, this store is a huge business for us and does great numbers around there.
And out of eight, how like stores?
Out of eight thousand stores. It's not like you're talking 100, it's about eight thousand stores.
So my, I guess one question I would have is, since we do big pizza sales, is that a, is that a food that you are looking to keep? Because it kind of goes against your, your thought about, thought about fighting obesity.
So, so I can take that cheese slowly.
Yeah.
You know, I cannot.
Just curious.
Yeah, no, I write down something which is running right now and slowly try to do it. For example, I have, I will design two windows in my thing for, for daily food.
Okay.
Slowly, I can produce, you know, without losing money. So let's see how far I can push people.
Yeah, that's my thought. Like, I know, I know it's a great, it's a great idea and I think it's a great idea to, especially for, for something like a convenience store model, it's hard to sort of just pull in that.
Yeah, I'm going against the wind right now, but let's see how far I can go.
Okay. I'm curious to see. I think that's, I think that's inspiring.
For instance, we do have a promo going.
Yeah.
Pretty, we do call bad food, I guess, like pizza or hot dog. We do offer a $1 fruit cup with it, brand new items and stuff. We are trying to implement the screens and everything.
Yep.
So we're trying to get people out there to get into involving that, so. It's just introduction, so it's just get people in the door, seeing product and they go over there. And you've been doing a great job of that. I mean, we had a health pop down there the other day, they, they were proud and happy with everything that went on, so.
Good luck on that.
You've been doing very well.
Thank you.
Keep, keep your pizza.
Can I just ask you, just that you name for the record, please?
James Cross.
Thank you.
I also have heard through the grapevine that you've been a great partner to our school that's directly in front in terms of allowing, allowing parking, dropping off, so that's also, it's great.
We'll keep that up. We want all, all the community members to feel that at home as much as we can provide enough. And that's a great place for us to start sampling things. So that's like 3:00, we go out and sample.
Do we have a motion to approve the 24-hour licence?
No, your motion should be to approve the transfer.
Transfer the licence, 24, already operating 24.
Yeah.
And that's been cleared up in the audience. Thank you.
Motion to approve the transfer?
Stephanie. Have a motion. Stephanie, second by you, go. Any further questions? We've seen none here, you know. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, nays, ayes, ahs. Let's continue the way to do it. Give a good reputation. Keep that pizza.[1723.74]
Next item. Next item is a public hearing. It is for the, to progress the public input and comment on the City's Centrefalls year eleven R.I.P.D.E.S.M.S. four report. Director Partridge is here to speak about it. We, so the report that she comes up and asks for your comments, any input on any of the bases, and this report that's submitted to D E M.
Hi, my name is Elaine Partridge, I'm the Director of Public Works and Code Enforcement. Every year, all the cities and towns in Rhode Island that have a small municipal separate stormwater sewer system has to file a report with D E M to track the progress of compliance for pollution of storm drains. One of the requirements of this report is to hold a public hearing, and that's why I'm here tonight. In this report, the city explains what we are doing to prevent pollution from entering the storm drains. This year, the report contains information on community cleanups held by the city and other special interest groups, implementation of mechanized trash and recycling, the scheduling and cleaning of storm drains and inspections of sewer manholes, and what we are doing to educate the public regarding pollution prevention and stormwater impacts. The result of this report is a permit that will be issued to the city by D E M, allowing us to eliminate into the storm drains.
So, all the information, it's quite a bit of information to absorb. Anyone have any questions before we all, I think Mr. Lazea might have questions on this, it is a public hearing.
Yeah, no question.
I think it was brought up.
I'm familiar with it now, the chief reminded, I fully support it.
A quick question for you, Ms. Partridge. So, can you tell us a little about, is this an annual report that you traditionally do? And how would this one deviate from, does it deviate from last year's? Just generally speaking, so.
This is only the second year that I've done this, this has been going on for eleven years. This deviates from last year's because I have to do what we did in two thousand fourteen. For example, in the two thousand thirteen report, we had just gotten the sewer truck, catch basin truck to clean the sewers.
Right.
So, in two thousand thirteen, for the first time in seven years, we were actually able to clean a hundred fifty catch basins. In this report, I'm recording on that we've done two hundred ninety-three since we got this truck, and we, out of four hundred eighty-four. So, we're actually making a big impact on them, and, and to D E M, that's very impressive.
Fantastic.
Right? The other thing is, all these community cleanups, for example, in Jenks Park, every time we, we clean up the leaves, the debris, that's all stuff we're preventing from going into the catch basins.
Right.
So, it's anything we've done during the year in two thousand fourteen.
For maintenance of that, and also for storm water.
Right, because every time we clean a catch basin, we also inspect it.
Right.
For our damage. If there's damage, we try to repair it immediately. And a lot of cities and towns haven't done this stuff in a long time. So, they're kind of impressed with what we've done in such a short time.
How is, how would you rate the condition of those that you've done thus far?
Most of them are in pretty good shape. A lot of them, the bricks are actually coming out the mortar, we actually have to go in, rebuild it, and, and build it up again. We have some catch basins that take five minutes to clean, and I have some catch basins that may take four hours to clean, depending on how much is impacted in there, the sand, the bottles, or whatever gets in there.
Is there any area that you've cleaned thus far around the city that sort of stands out to you that has, has, has topography issues? I mean, are there things that are happening at lower points in the city or anything like that, that make those areas of concern for you?
The concern is, some of these catch basins haven't been cleaned in many years. For example, I'm finding Earl Street, Pine Street crossing in that area, it's taken us a long time to clean those.
Okay.
What we did in the first year that we got the truck was all the low-lying areas, because I don't want it to flood.
Right.
And what I did is go back to those areas this spring to make sure they were still clean and were running well. And then I slowly moved out. I've avoided Dexter Street, waiting for the work to be done, because the state is going to do that area.
There was some catch basin and work done this last summer too.
By, by the state, on Dexter.
Right, so, right, some like the easy stuff.
Dexter, and I've avoided that, because I've been trying to get the state into there.
Sure.
And those catch basins need a lot of work.
Yeah, okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
When is this report, do, when do you have to submit it?
The end of this month.
The end of this month, okay. So, this is my fault for not knowing how you reported on this. But we actually had an informal, about ten of us got together and had an informal cleanup of Illinois Street Park. And I could provide information on that if you want to add to this report, if that's helpful.
I would love to add it.
And then going forward, I will certainly provide you with, with details about any other issues.
Absolutely, I'll include it if you'll get it to me.
Yeah, I'll do that. And then lastly, I know that this is a little bit of a change, it's not related to this, but since we have you here, it'd be great to hear a little bit about how you and your team have been doing with, with all the snow, especially as we gear up for more snow tomorrow night. How's it been, and thank you, thank you very much for, for everything.
Well, it's been very hectic, it's like every other day we're doing snow. But when we know there's a snowstorm coming, we actually pre-treat when we see the first flakes of snow, because it really helps to get the snow and ice off the ground once it actually falls. We have a couple of problems, and I can't stress this enough. The biggest thing that I need is for people to get off the street, to let us do our job. The second thing that needs to happen is for people to not throw the snow in the street. That's the two things that would help us tremendously. The guys have been tremendous, they're the ones who deserve all the credit, they're the ones doing the work. I don't do the work, I physically stay with them for moral support, and if there's any problems, that I can address right away. Breakdowns in the middle of the night, I actually have contractors that'll actually come out, work on the trucks immediately, so I can get them back out there. I've built up a wonderful surrounding of people that I can rely on in problems like that. But the guys, you know, they're tired, they're not machines, and, you know, but the constant grind, it's, it's exhausting, but they do a good job.
And, so I know that it's tough, because people are dumping the snow in the street, but then homeowners are asked to clear their, their sidewalks, and there's really no place to put it. In terms of ticketing, is that something that, that has been happening, has been increasing, and has been?
We have not ticketed anyone for not shoveling their sidewalks. It's a very difficult ordinance to enforce.
I know.
Because, how can I find him and not find you? You know? There's not enough of us to go around and do that. I really think that maybe we should ticket people actually snowblowing into the street, because once we clear it, we go home, they just blow it back in the street, looks like we haven't done a thing. But it's not always the homeowner doing that, it's probably the tenant doing that. It, it's a very hard thing to do, and I don't know the answer. I am working with the administration to try to figure that out, the best way to address this.
Thank you.
Elaine, I, I think the courtesy's been working, the police have really done a great job motivating people to get their cars off the road.
Did the police?
Are we finding less cars being towed now, because they're complying?
There has been a lot less cars towed. Years ago, if you remember, I think there was like two hundred cars towed.
Oh, yeah, they put a statement at one time.
I have the permits here, but I believe the last one, I think it was twenty-six.
It's good, they give them a good notice, and I guess they're not tidying through an hour or two after the notice goes out. Seems to be working, what I've seen, it looks like the, the streets are pretty clear.
Like I said, with the cooperation of the police, our department, you know, we work together.
Anyone else? So, I think what we had before was, we're basically just going to accept the report, and we've had the public hearing. With that, I'm looking for just a roll call vote to accept the report, and we had to hear it. Anyone else? You understand, we're just going to approve this report, is, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Motion, motion.
I'm going to vote. Have a motion by Stephanie, I can, seconded by Tia. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, nays, ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you, Elaine.
We are now moving on to the resolution of the Centrefalls City Council, supporting legislation S-0068, by Senator Proudley, and H-5312 by President Maldonado, that exempts the premises at seven twenty-one to seven twenty-three Broad Street, Centrefalls. Assesses plot two, one, plot one.